Good afternoon, and welcome to the special meeting of the City of Glendale's Commission on the Status of Women. Roll call please.
Vice Chair Magron.
Here.
Commissioner Perian.
Here.
Commissioner Submergen.
Here.
Ex officio Delanyan.
Here.
Ex officio Garbada.
Here.
Chair Burns.
Commissioner Brusalian.
Both absent.
Chair Burns and Commissioner Brusalian are home ill, and so Vice Chair Magron will be serving as chair for this meeting and running the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harpitan. Next item, please.
Item 1A, flak salute.
Chair Magron, you can lead this. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1B, report regarding the posting of the agenda. The agenda for the February 27, 2019, special meeting was posted on the bulletin board outside of City Hall on February 25, 2019. Item, actually, do you want to? Item 2, introductions and presentations. Item 2A, presentation by Laura Duncan, Executive Director of Essentia.
Chair Magron, members of the Commission, I'd like to invite Dr. Laura Duncan. Dr. Laura Duncan is not new to Essentia, but she is new by way of being the Executive Director, and so we invited her here today to meet with the Commission and provide you with some pertinent information about the good work that Essentia is doing. Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Chair, Dr. Magron, Commissioners and City Staff. As Christine said, my name's Dr. Laura Duncan, and I am the Executive Director for Essentia. I'm in my fifth year there. I started as the Director of Programs. Essentia is a comprehensive homeless services agency in South Glendale, so we do serve men and women. So I want to ask you a question first before I start my presentation. What's the difference between ignorance and apathy? I don't know, and I don't care. People tend to care when their lives are touched by a cause in a personal way, through a relative, a friend, a neighbor, or their own personal experience. While we can educate people so that they're not ignorant and they know, the harder part is to get people who haven't been touched in this way to care, to address the apathy part. The homeless crisis has become highly visible in Los Angeles County and other parts of California and the country, so now more people are starting to experience it in a more up-close and personal way, like trying to walk into 7-Eleven. It's pretty much part of the expected landscape to bump into someone or have someone there that you're going to walk past or through. But most people are caring, and that's reflected in the passing of Proposition HHH and Measure H. People want to know more and more, and they are starting to care more and more. So I do have the presentation to show you, and it's brief. Thank you. So what are the main factors or reasons that contribute to someone becoming homelessness or homeless? I always ask this in an interview because people can come up with two, and then, I always say four or five. They come up with two, and then they're stuck. They have to really think about it. So if you can just click away there, we've got, in no particular order, the substance abuse or substance use disorder, mental health, lack of income or financial hardship, lack of a support system, fleeing domestic violence, and lack of housing inventory that's available and affordable, right? Who is homeless? Well, the most represented subpopulations of the homeless population are military veterans, victims of or fleeing domestic violence, thank you, emancipating foster care youth, LGBT persons, and persons with disabilities. There's a little pie chart there of demographics. The red piece is the largest piece, which is male, and then the female piece. The male, we serve about 55% on average males each year, and about, the balance is female, and that's with the lighter green. Next slide. Specific to women, I have some demographics here on this. This is a five-year snapshot. The next set of data will be available probably in about August of this year, but it runs on a fiscal year. So you can see I've got five years there that ended last July or last June. So we serve about 1,200 people a year. 1617 is, everything is undercounted because there was a CLARITY, HMIS, add Systech to CLARITY Merge with our Homeless Management Information System, and quite frankly, it wasn't very smooth, and a lot of data was probably lost. And rather than just guess, we just went with the conservative numbers. So we have dips in that year. So looking specifically at women, we, you could see we average about 45% of our population being female, so women and girls, and then we also include transfemale, so that takes it up to about maybe 46% on average. The numbers of families with children, in the last five years, we've had 134 households with children, most of whom are single parents that are female, right? That's the head of household. I think I can remember one who was a male, head of household, and count on one hand the number of two-parent households with a male. Number of children, served 214 over the last, the five years. Now, it's a little hard to read on the left, but specifically what we offer, and this is to both men and women, psychiatric services, we do telepsychiatry there, we have trauma therapists who are specializing in modalities such as EMDR, eye movement and rapid desensitization movement, so that's a modality for, specifically for trauma. We also have tutoring for school-aged children, reproductive health education, parenting, any groups, classes, those types of things, counseling, addiction's counseling, financial literacy, super important, and a lot of times, we have a lot of women who come to those classes, just still leftovers of the way things used to be or typically or historically were, with men being the breadwinners and that sort of thing. Employment services, disability services, healing arts, and permanent housing and housing retention, of course. Who else is becoming homeless? Now lately, we're seeing more of the elderly, and that includes a lot of women because we outlive men. There are more women that become elderly and single again. Also, families with minor children because of the costs involved, they can't afford the housing costs with all the costs with the kids, and a lot, again, a lot are single women. It'll be a three-leaf clover next month. But anyway, we have three phases. The bottom phase is Phase 1, and these are basic needs on the front end of services. So this involves, we'll get into that a little bit on the next slide, but Phase 2 is meeting psychological needs, that's the midsection. Phase 3 is akin to self-actualization, and that's the back end of services. Next slide, please. So referring to this, Phase 1 is outreach, engagement, and assessment. We have outreach teams who actually go in the community and find where people are living or staying or have moved to, and they engage them or attempt to. If we have females that are resistant or have trauma issues that don't want to deal with our male outreach teams, we will send female staff. We will make the accommodation specifically because sometimes they'll be more trusting and willing to speak to a female. The phase, the middle phase is when they, all the documentations gathered, they're enrolling in our services. We have an emergency shelter, which historically has been 40 beds, and we recently, this year, increased it to 45. We're crowded, we're cramped, we went up, we created more bunk beds than we had, and we may still be able to do more with that. And that was because of the increase in the number of the single-parent homeless families, so we're serving more families now this way. The midsection is when you get document ready, you establish a source of income, you have a housing plan, and at the end of that stage is when you move into your housing, your permanent housing. That's not the end of the story, that's not the happy ending. We have Phase 3, which is now we have to help people stay in their housing. It's labor-intensive. Connect them to the new resources in the area, especially like what has to do with childcare and schools and things, as a single mother, you know, getting the resources you need to be able to take care of the children and yourself and meet all of the demands of having a home. Next slide. We're funded by the cities of Glendale, Burbank, and West Hollywood, and all said and done, to serve about 600 people per year, yet you could see from the graph earlier, and what I'm telling you right now, is we serve double that every year on average. How can you say no when there's such a need? Well, we have to say no at some point because we just don't have the bandwidth. We also have to share a small number of agency vehicles. If we're serving 1,200 people a year, about 200, maybe it'll be 220 this year since we have more beds, will come through our emergency shelter. So that means the other 900 to 1,000 are unsheltered, but we still service them through our access center. Our housing and urban and development goal is to exit 20% of those we touch that are enrolled into permanent housing, and our actual is closer to 35%, so we get it done. That's, I always tell people, homeless services has a 75 or 65 to 80% failure rate, but don't look at it that way. And a lot of that has to do with the lack of available housing at the moment. In 12 years, Essentia housed over 1,400 people. That's a lot of people off the streets for a small agency in one little city, right? Yeah, out of 88. I can tell you that it works, 94% will still be in housing after a year, and we've been tracking for almost seven years now that I've been there, I mean, that I went back because I've been there almost, I mean, my fifth, but I went back and got data I could, and at the six-year and now seven-year mark, 90% or more are still in that housing, and when they fall out, we rehouse them if we know about it. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Thank you for your presentation. So I do work for Glendale Unified School District, and I am the administrator in charge of homeless families. We appreciate what you do, and we always refer our cases and our families to you, but at times I get some questions from families that they are not comfortable or due to the fact that the families are not placed together, so I just wanted to clarify that. So if there's a mom, family of three or four kids, are they stationed or are they sleeping together in one room, or are the kids separated from the parents?
Well, first let me say to the Commission that I would invite any of you to come and take a tour, and we're open to that totally. We do, we encourage that, in fact. It's easier to understand something when we can see it, right? But I'll tell you, the shelter is upstairs, and it has two sides. It's divided, but they're not closed off from each other. There's like a wall, but it doesn't go all the way across, so you can walk around it. And one side is the female-identified side, and the other side is the male-identified side. So families are all upstairs together. We will put mother and children and prepubescent boys with the mom on the mom's side, and same goes if it's a single dad with young girl, she stays with him. If we have intact families, we have a separate family room. It can be for two parents if they're of opposite gender, they can go in there with their children. We also use it for households that have teenage boys with single moms, so that they're not separated from their mother, and they're in that family room. This was a fairly recent change, so maybe in years past, yes, it's true, we would have like a mother on one side and maybe the 10-year-old son would be on the male side, but we would put their beds as close together so that they would, could lean around the corner and see each other, yeah.
Perfect.
And we have designated, you know, separate everything else, shower and restroom, and we also have gender-neutral and family restrooms, so mom or dad can put a bunch of kids in the bathtub, baby station station, that sort of thing. So we're trying to make it family-friendly and not separate by gender.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Duncan, for coming here and meeting with me this past week. As you know, right out of high school, my first real job was as a Children's Program Director in Essentia, and it is true what she says, meeting them and being touched by this experience, I really, truly, deeply cared about the members of our society that we don't usually have the opportunity to meet and talk to. So that experience broke down my preconceived stereotypes about what it means to be homeless, made me realize that we're all a few misfortunes away from having that happen to us. Teen runaways, single mothers, especially elderly women, are very vulnerable. As Commissioners on the status of women, it is our great privilege to represent the women of our society, but a lot of times, we don't have that connection between the most underserved women in our community and us. So if we could have a meeting that Dr. Duncan so graciously accepted, that we could meet with the women, perhaps ask them their status personally, perhaps have a tour and see, really feel what their day-to-day life is like, ask them about their challenges, and do an art healing program that you mentioned would be a great incorporation to make them feel at ease. I think it would be, I personally feel like it's my duty as a Commissioner to reach out and show them that we care. I think the information would be invaluable, and I would really like to hear them. So if anybody would like to join me, I propose that we spend some time with the women of Essentia.
And so, again, I'm not quite sure exactly what the, so the intent is to go to Essentia and interview these women to find out why they are at Essentia and what brought them? I was not, I wasn't clear.
Oh, so Dr. Duncan and I spoke a week ago, and I had mentioned to Christine before, because I have that personal connection with Essentia, especially the women of Essentia as a Commissioner, I would really like to reach out to them now that I've gotten, you know, a position where I can help them out with resources and connect them with anything that, you know, they really need. So I would like to reach back out to them, ask them their status, and really get to know personally, something not invasive or personal that has to do anything with their privacy, but it would just be us going and having an informal, she mentioned, Dr. Duncan, that a vision board would be a nice thing to talk about, and ask them maybe three basic questions, like, what are your challenges? Like, you know these people personally, and they come to you, and you got that information, and you knew what to ask. I think that's very important because a lot of times we assume what their needs are, but it would be best if we could actually talk to them, and they could tell us what their needs are, and we could focus our ideas on that.
If I may, the conversation that we had, I invited her over to tour, Elena wanted to talk to me about a couple things, so that was one of them, and I had mentioned that I would like to, we talked about it briefly, but also there would need to be like a, if it was to go and have to go through like kind of a proposal to see exactly what's going to happen, because we want to make sure we don't open up a can of wounds and then not have a way to put it back together at the end of it. So we have to be careful, it's a delicate situation.
I agree, yeah. This is very confidential, and so, go ahead.
And if I may add, thank you. Well, I think visiting the facility is a wonderful idea. I am, I don't think I'm a qualified, a professionally-trained individual to conduct such questions, and then what do I do with the answers? You know, how do we collate the answers, and how do we group the answers, and then what do we do with them? I personally am not a qualified individual to, you know, pose these kind of questions from such troubled individuals, but by all means, I, you know, if there is an opportunity to visit the place, I will, you know, I certainly can come and support and so that. Thank you.
Yeah, we have a lot of data on the factors and reasons, but individually, we can't because of confidentiality and all that, but we have aggregate data. I think I presented some of it as to the reasons and some of the barriers, but anyway.
I mean, personally, last week, on Thursday, our TAP class was at Essentia Serving. We do run teenage partnership with the Police Department, and so we gather some of our youth and our parents, and we meet on a weekly basis, and one of their activities is that they visit Essentia and they feed our families, and I think that is a, we've been doing this for two years, and their students are touched, they come back, they are, you know, they appreciate and they understand, you know, that others have barriers as well, but I mean, I'm a therapist myself, but I work with these families, and I think it's very unprofessional and to go and interview and confidential and want to say why you're in such a situation. If there is, I personally think that if there is surveys out there that we could do, conduct without names mentioned, why you are in a situation, and you do that, that's part of your probably intake, correct? That we can look at data, maybe, maybe we can have further presentation from your organization later on with more data, but personally going, I know these families and parents, I don't think I really want to get.
It's very delicate.
I would like to reiterate that it would be nothing personal, all I want to do is get an idea of what their challenges are. There would be no names, there would be completely anonymous, but what I was thinking is, you just ask them like, what are your dreams, what are your hopes, what do you want to achieve, and maybe we can have some resources, as someone who works for the city, as I've worked for the state, that we could, you know, connect with them, but if we don't have a consensus, I guess we will not.
If I may, staff is happy to help coordinate, you know, either one-on-one or two-on-one visits, tours, and whatever the level of comfort is with each Commissioner as to the extent of your interaction, obviously, under the advisement of Dr. Duncan and whatever rules and procedures they have. Staff would be happy to coordinate that, you know, and whatever it looks like for each Commissioner and whatever your level of comfort and involvement is, we can certainly help make that connection.
And certainly, we would have to meet the requirements of Essentia, so if they're not able to share a certain type of information for sensitivity reasons, then certainly we wouldn't want to pry, but I think the tours are just open generally, and so, as Christine said, we would be able to help coordinate that, and certainly not just for the Commissioners who are here, but those who are absent as well.
Yeah, and I think the idea of getting more people involved in the guest chef program is awesome because, especially younger, the youth, because that gets at that ignorance and apathy directly, then now they're getting that experience and they tap into it, like, okay, I'm starting to understand this, and I'm starting to become very concerned and interested, so.
And I have to share this, after the eight-week sessions that are over, we do a survey with our students and our parents, that what is it that touched your life during this, feeding our families and visiting Essentia is number one. So we thank you and appreciate you for allowing our students and youth to come in and serve our families. Thank you.
You're welcome. Number one way to raise someone's self-esteem is helping others. So my self-esteem's great. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, please.
Item 3, oral comment. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. The Commission may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or discussion. Staff may refer the matter to the proper department for investigation and report. No guest speaker cards were submitted.
Next item, please.
Item 4, consent items for A, approval of the minutes of the special commission meeting held on November 28, 2018.
Roll call, please.
Can we please have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call, beginning with Vice Chair Magron.
Here.
Yes.
Commissioner Perian.
Yes.
Commissioner Submergen.
Yes.
Item 5, business agenda. Item 5A, action items. Action item 1, 2019 quarterly meeting schedule for, or I'm sorry, quarterly meeting schedule of the Commission on the Status of Women. Item 1A, motion to cancel the regular commission meeting schedule for Monday, November 11, 2019.
And then just to register.
Item 1B, motion to hold a special commission meeting in November 2019.
Thank you. Chair Magron, members of the Commission, as you know, the Commissioner's regular meeting schedule is set for the second Monday of each quarter, and that would be February, May, August, and November. The November meeting falls on Veterans Day when all facilities are closed, it's a federal holiday, and so at this point, staff is coming to the Commission to look at an alternative date in November. Some of those dates are highlighted for you in the report, and they include Wednesday, November 6, Thursday, November 7, Monday, November 18, and Wednesday, November 27. With the first date, November 6, there is a planning commission meeting scheduled at the same time in the Municipal Services Building. The Commission can certainly hold their meeting here, the meeting wouldn't be aired live, it would be recorded and aired at a later time. There are no conflicts with the November 7 or the November 18 date, and as far as the Wednesday, November 27 date, the only conflict potentially, there's no conflict that day, but it is the day before Thanksgiving, so just something to consider.
Yeah.
So, and if none of these dates are feasible, we can look at dates in October. The other option is to cancel the November meeting and hold off on scheduling a meeting, but it would be nice to get something booked for the room and just so that other commissions, as they may need to change dates, are aware of the hold for the commission. Thank you.
I would propose to have it on November 7, Thursday? That works for everybody?
Yes.
I think so. Yes, November 7 works.
And we could keep it at the 5:30. I put in there 4:30 PM or later, that's certainly flexible, but if the Commission so chooses, we could keep it at the 5:30 time. Any other dates?
November 7 works.
So then we have a motion from Commissioner Perian to have the meeting on Thursday, November 7 at 5:30 PM.
I will second.
Thank you.
Yes, roll call, Vice Chair Magron.
Yes.
Commissioner Perian.
Yes.
Commissioner Submergen.
Yes.
Item 2, consideration of state legislation for the Commission on the Status of Women's Legislative Agenda. Item 2A, motion providing direction on the list of bills presented.
Thank you. Chair Magron, members of the Commission, in 2015, the Commission adopted its legislative platform, which focuses on the following priority: women in the workplace, women's health, women in the budget, women in the military and military- women in the workplace, women's health, women in the budget, women in the military and military families, women in post-secondary education, and women's safety. And so, based on this platform, staff monitors and brings forward any pertinent state legislation for your review and recommendation to City Council. And the state legislator did, the state legislature convened for its new session in December 2018. They had until midnight on February 22 to introduce new bills. There was a lot of bills introduced that, as of the time of writing of this report, staff didn't have the ability to review. So there will be more for the commission to consider at the next meeting. But at this time, there are two bills that, based on the platform, looked feasible for the commission's review. One of them should look familiar. It is a redo, Assemblymember Garcia's bill, AB 31. Two years ago, she had introduced this bill as AB 9 and the commission had supported it and City Council had supported it. And this is a sales and use tax exemption on feminine hygiene products. And so, this bill, if it were to pass, would, after January 1, 2020, exempt feminine hygiene products from the sales and use tax at both the state and local level. The statewide fiscal impact associated with the passing of this bill would impact the State General Fund by less than a tenth of a percent. And it's much less than a tenth of a percent. And as I mentioned, this is a repeat bill that she is bringing forward. And given the $15 billion surplus in the State General Fund at this time, the assembly member was encouraged to reintroduce the bill again. And staff, based on the commission's platform and previous actions, staff recommends a support of this bill. The other bill, there doesn't have too much information in there yet, but it's AB 752 by a new assembly member, Gabriel. And it has to do with lactation rooms in public transit centers. So at this time, the state of California does require airports to have lactation centers. And so, our Burbank-Hollywood Airport, LAX, do have either nursing rooms or pumping pods. And so, this is an attempt to make this happen at the train and bus level. There is some, and the bill is, as you can see in the exhibit, the bill is, I think, one sentence long. And so, there are going to be amendments to this bill. But the intent is to provide an area for women to pump or nurse at bus stations and train stations. Staff did talk to the Assemblymember's office about what kind of transit centers would be included. For example, the Glendale Transit Center is very small. It's not staffed. There's a security guard there. And there are no concessionary type of items like food or drink or any sort of customer service office. So they're looking at larger transit centers like Union Station where you have customer service. You have, you know, food and drink and more comprehensive set of restrooms. Glendale Transit Center is, Transportation Center is also a historical building. So there would be some limitations on what could be done there. So they're looking more at Union Station type of places and less at our Transportation Center. So there is likely to be amendments and that might change the commission's position. But based on what's being presented and based on the commission's past history on these type of items, staff does recommend support at this time. And that concludes the legislative update. Thank you. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions?
Not really a question, but I do anticipate a lot of amendments to that second one. And I'd be very curious as far as what the vision is in terms of funding this, especially bus stops. You know, the safety concerns about that. The hygiene concerns with pumping, you do need sink. So, you know, the burden that would pose on these facilities, I would be very much interested in that.
Yes, Commissioner Perian kind of addressed that. The, some of the conversation did have to do with the fact that airports, there's a security clearance that you have to go to and you are at these centers, you know, at the airport for a considerable amount of time. One of the suggestions I actually made was that they put a nursing area on the train itself versus at the actual station, because.
That's actually a very good idea.
So they said there's going to be lots of changes and they will keep us posted on those changes.
Another mode I just thought of, the metro link at every stop. Would there be the need to, you know?
This would be at like structured facilities. So for example, in Burbank, there is no structure for the train station is, it's a platform that's open that is just adjacent to the airport. So I would imagine that that wouldn't be something. And they're looking at higher volume, higher ridership, and not making it so cost prohibitive, as you're saying, as to where, you know, Burbank would now have to erect a structure at a platform to accommodate that. They want to do it where it makes sense to do it, I think, is the intent. So.
They would have to, I guess, on the bill then define clearly, you know, what qualifies for that.
And that was, that's how the initial conversation started, was request to clarify. And if there was any language on what a transit center, how they define a transit center, a regional transit center.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if there's a motion to support the bills or?
I'll motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Vice Chair Magrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Perian?
Yes.
Commissioner Subergen?
Yes.
Thank you. Item three, establishment of ad hoc committees to support the 2019 to 2022 Commission on the Status of Women's Strategic Plan. Item three A, motion providing direction on ad hoc committees.
Thank you. Chair Magrin, members of the commission. Last night, City Council approved the commission's 2019-22 strategic plan. And thank you to commissioners who attended last night's meeting. At this time, staff recommends that the commission consider establishing ad hoc committees and assigning commissioners to each ad hoc committee. And this, as you know, allows the commissioners to continue the work of the commission and have meetings in between the quarterly meetings. And commissioners can provide updates at the quarterly meetings. Sometimes there are even staff reports that come out of some of the activities of the ad hoc committees. Staff does recommend that no more than one to two actual commission members sit on each ad hoc committee so as to not have Brown Act noticing requirements. And that'll just make it easier to meet. That doesn't, the ex officio commissioners, however, won't trigger that since they're not voting members. So it would be one, up to two commissioners. And the ex officio commissioners can also join on as well. These ad hoc committees are temporary. The commission can sunset them at any time if and when the goals of that committee have been accomplished. For example, we did that with an ad hoc committee that had to do with working on the report on the status of women and girls. And similarly, the one that worked on the strategic plan, that one also sunsetted. So at this time, staff is recommending that we sunset all of the previous ad hoc committees. And based on our new strategic plan, there are three ad hoc committees that are proposed. Certainly welcome to make changes to the structure and setup of these ad hoc committees. They are, ad hoc committee one on evaluate and assess is, of course, based on strategic aim one. And this committee's goals would be to address issues and needs confronting the women and girls in Glendale, evaluate and identify gaps in existing services and resources, and recommend and support programs. So the members of this committee would work with staff to identify existing resources and increase the access to those resources for women and girls in Glendale. Ad hoc committee two, communication and education, is based on strategic aim three. So this committee would work to increase the level of knowledge in the community regarding women and girls issues. And this committee would work to identify community groups and organizations to provide the educational presentations at these meetings, similarly to having Ascensia here. And also, a goal of this committee would be working with staff to educate the community about its work through the city website and really maximizing the commission's page on the city website and what kind of information does the commission want to see on there. And we can also refer women and have that be a hub of information for women and girls as well, in addition to the resource guide that we have. And then ad hoc committee three, community partnerships and outreach is based on strategic aim four. And so, this committee would review the commission's collaborations with the community, including departments and other commissions, our local nonprofits, service organizations, educational institutions, to identify and solicit interested stakeholders to join the commission's work. And so, what kind of partnerships do we have in place? Staff didn't propose an ad hoc committee for the Policy Development Advocacy and Advising Committee as that comes to you in the way of state legislative updates, as you just had in the previous item. And I will stop there. And I understand that, you know, we are two commissioners short today. So if at this time, the commissioners who are present want to express interest and maybe fill some of this, and we can always come back to this at another time, or we can assign commissioners to ad hocs, however you want to move forward. But I'll leave it to you all. No, thank you.
If we can bring it back, when we all are here, present, that'd be great. And that would be my personal opinion. But again.
I do respect the fact that we are down two. I am concerned, though, that that's going to put it out for another three months.
When's our next meeting?
Mid-May, I believe, May 13.
Is it possible to maybe collect the information via email? Can we do that? Or that's, no, sorry.
Certainly, there are a number of opportunities that are present. You can perhaps identify those that you are interested in and leave some open for the other commissioners so that you don't have to vote on the entire package at this time. But you could get the work started with those who already have their eye on a particular area.
I would motion that option more just to get it going. Because what's to say at the next meeting, you know, we're not going to be out two people? We just don't know. So.
But either way, we would have to wait until May until all of them get filled, correct? So we can actually have meetings? Would the ad hoc meetings go on without commissioners for each?
Yes, so because you're selecting no more than two at each, for each ad hoc. So if there is an expression of interest for one, then, for example, one person would fill that and maybe get started with the work. Because this is done by commission vote, if at a later meeting you want to change that, you may. So it would just require a reconsideration on the part of the body to vote on the item again. So for example, if you pick committee A this time and then you hear at the next meeting that a different commissioner really has her heart set on it, then we could revisit that and maybe change roles at that point. It's up to you. You've got options.
I would prefer to at least take a first stab at this meeting. And I definitely will, you know, can be flexible if, you know, somebody else is much more passionate than I am to, you know, either transition to another committee or.
I reviewed the last meeting about this and I would motion to wait and have everyone present and get started with everybody.
Okay, so there's been an expression of two different opinions. I think at this point, you made the first motion. Is there a second to support that? If not, then that motion would fail for lack of a second. And then we would hear your motion and then we'd look for a second for that. And if there's no second for that, both motions would fail. So I guess your motion is to select, to try to fill as many of the committees as possible. Is there a second for that motion? So that motion would fail for lack of a second and your motion is to continue it to the next meeting. Is there a second for that motion?
I'd rather wait, yeah. And I'll second that.
Okay, so let's take role on that.
Vice Chair Magrin?
Yes.
It's actually because you, never mind, let's see how it plays out, sorry.
Vice Chair Magrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Perian?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Perian?
Well, so how would it play out?
This is what I was about to say. You need unanimous consent on that. Because if you don't all agree, then we would basically start the discussion. And then, and then it just would be cyclical. You wouldn't come to an agreement. It would have to continue anyway.
I'll just agree with my peers, colleagues.
So, Perian, that's a yes.
And I believe ex officio Garabetian, yes?
Yeah, I had a quick question. For these ad hoc meetings, are they set in stone already? Or so, would it be possible, like, if we don't vote on it today? For example, if one of them caught my interest, would it be possible for me to attend? Or do we have to have confirmation now and then move forward like that?
It's continuing anyway. But as Ms. Powers indicated earlier, your participation does not impact the noticing requirements of Brown Act. And so, you could, you could attend whichever of the meetings that you'd like.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
So this will just be held over to the next meeting then. Certainly, if there's anyone interested in anything that has to do with the strategic plan, you're welcome to contact staff and provide some information and feedback that we can bring back to the next meeting. Thank you.
Item four, consideration and discussion of a program celebrating the centennial of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution. Item four A, motion providing direction regarding the sponsorship of a program for the centennial celebration of the 19th Amendment.
Thank you. Chair Magrin, commissioners, if I can provide you with a little bit of background on this. 2020 marks the centennial of the ratification of the 19th Amendment of the United States Constitution, which granted women the right to vote. And the commission has been presented with the opportunity to partner with the City of Glendale's Library Arts and Culture Department to, and along with other potential organizations, to support and become a sponsor of this endeavor. This is a name sponsor only. So certainly, the library department is not asking for any sort of monetary contribution from the commission, but recognize the importance of having the commission on board with such a monumental marking and history. And so, the main focal point of this would be a Reflect Space exhibit. And the Reflect Space is a space within the downtown Central Library. It's a new, it's part of the new renovations and it is a, like a mini art exhibition space that is intended to highlight atrocities against humankind and, let's see, explore and reflect on the past and present of Glendale's communal fabric and current global human rights issues. And so, it would be a celebration, it would be a reflection of the past 100 years. The exact theme hasn't been set. We would work with the curator of the Reflect Space, who works for the library department. They, usually what they do is they put out bids to different artists and they see what they get and then they curate the exhibit based on what they receive. So it would really, as things come in, kind of help shape what the exhibit would look and feel like. But certainly, if there's a particular direction the commission wants to see that exhibit going, that can certainly help shape that as well. The exhibit is already, has a date to run. It's from January 16 to March 20, 2020. This works nicely with Women's History Month in March and International Women's Day, which next year will be March 9. Reflect Space exhibits are usually accompanied by lectures and panel series. And so, this would actually be part of a larger series of events. And during, and be organized during the time that the exhibit is on display. And in addition to the commission, other offices and organizations have been asked to join this effort. None of them have been 100% confirmed yet, but some of them include the League of Women Voters, the Office of Assemblymember Laura Friedman, the Office of State Senator Anthony Portantino, and the LA County Commission on the Status of Women. So at this time, staff is requesting that the commission consider the sponsorship, see if it's something that the commission wants to get involved in. Excuse me. And if a member of the commission is interested in participating alongside staff with the planning meetings, the planning meetings would take place during normal operating hours. So just be aware of that. I'm so sorry. Excuse me. The library department will budget for the cost of the Reflect Space exhibit and some of the accompanying events, but will also, excuse me, I'm so sorry. But will also look for sponsorships from different organizations. also look for sponsorships from different organizations. And I will stop right there. Thank you. I'll be happy to answer your questions.
I think that's a lovely idea. I would love to participate and help. So count me in.
Do we have to take a motion?
It would be nice to have a motion for a formal sponsorship. And if you want to weave into that motion, a member of the commission that would be part of the planning committee, that would be great, too.
Okay. I would motion to proceed with that.
Participate and designate yourself as the liaison?
I would like to, if nobody else wants to. I'm willing. Does anyone second this?
It needs a second.
I'll second.
Vice Chair Magrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Perian?
Yes.
Commissioner Subergen?
Yes.
Item six, commission staff comments.
If there's any comments from commissioners, and staff also has a couple of comments, but they can be held at the end if you'd like.
Any comments?
Just very, if I may, very quickly, yesterday, I did attend the Seroptimist Human Trafficking lecture, which was very informative. Sad, very informative, but a very important and critical topic.
If staff, I'd like, I have two announcements. One is, the Downtown Glendale Association is having its inaugural International Women's Day Summit. I believe you all have flyers. And I'm not sure if we have a flyer to display, but it will be held on March 14, March 8. I'm sorry, March 8. Friday, March 8 at 1:30 at CBRE. There are tickets, tickets are being sold. They're very reasonable in price. There's going to be breakout sessions, a champagne toast, and a panel discussion. And so I hope to see some of you there. It would be great. And there has been conversation to bring the DGA also and possibly incorporate this as part of the Women's Centennial Celebration next year, and have a DGA be part of it if they're so interested in the centennial events next year. And also, just wanted to congratulate Commissioner Magrin, who has been given the Tom Miller Award by the Glendale Healthier Community Coalition on April 4. There will be an awards luncheon at 11:00 AM at Adventist Health Hospital, and those interested in attending can contact Carrie Nelson at Adventist Hospital by March 18. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anything else? If there's anything else?
I do have one more question. Just remembered, yesterday at the city council meeting where we presented the upcoming strategic plan, council member Ara Najarian did express interest in obtaining metrics for various indices related to women and men in the community. So I was wondering, how do we go about obtaining that data, barring whatever is available already in the Loyola Mary Mount report itself? He mentioned that one that comes to mind is number of indictments and incarcerations, et cetera, number of losing job, finding job, et cetera.
Certainly. Commissioner Perian, I would turn to the report on the status of women and girls that the commission put out and published a couple of years ago. Beyond that, staff can check with the police department to look at some of, I believe some of it was incarceration rates.
Right.
And we can certainly also check in with the Verdugo Job Center, make that information available to both the council and the commission, and bring that to you.
That would be a great start, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
I motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned at 6:28 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you.